Testing, one, two, three. It's coming.
Okay, ten, ten seconds.
Testing. Testing, one, two, three. Testing. Testing. Hadi, hadi ho. A meeting of the Eastland City Commissioners. Oh, yeah. Testing, one, two, three. Hey, oh, man, I don't know if this is. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Ah, I hate audio. Testing, one, two, three.
Yeah, I think we do it. Yeah. Because let's see. Yeah, it's flat work.
Testing, one, two, three.
Isn't that flat work we're talking about is when we're talking.
That was good. That election seminar, election law seminar than I have the last four years, so.
Is here. Testing, one, two, three.
It's six oh seven, this is a regular meeting of the Eastland City Commission. I've asked Cecil to do the pledge and I'll do the prayer, let's pray. Father, thank you so much for this day and the time we have here to serve this community. We're blessed in Eastland for all the very positive things that are going on. We thank you for all of those that are making that happen. It's a great place to live and a great place to be and we thank you for that. We thank you, Father, for your son and what he means to us and for the life that he gave on the cross. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
United States flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, I'm pledging allegiance to the Texas flag.
I'm under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Public comment, we don't have anything on public comment, approve the meeting, the minutes of the December nineteenth meeting. And Ben and I are the only two here that were at that meeting.
I'll motion to approve the minutes from the December nineteenth meeting.
A motion from Ben and I'll second that to approve the meetings of December nineteenth. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Financial report, you've got a financial report, Leslie?
Yes, there's October and November in there, getting caught up. And then the current sales tax information is there.
That's amazing, off the charts.
Larry's gonna have more than a chart.
Got to redo the grid. Thank you, Tom.
So, things are going well in the city as far as, it's just normal stuff, there's not anything too out of the normal.
Anybody have any questions, or JJ?
If you look over there and have questions, just call me.
Okay, thank you. Recent economic development by annual report from Mr. Tom Sales Tax Bailey.
I thought I dazzled you with a little technology tonight, so. I'm kind of scared of that red dot, remember?
Yeah.
Uh, got some neat stuff going on and, you know, our wheels turn pretty slow. So you hear several milestones of the same projects over and over and I apologize for that. But it's just a slow evolutionary business, so. Barti fabs are a big thing right now, they're building their fab shop behind their metal shop. They're, it's amazing how fast they're going, they're gonna be working in there in a couple of weeks probably. And for those of you that don't know, they're gonna start making their own red iron, you know, for buildings. They've been making the sheets, you know, for the outside, they've been making gutters, trim and all that. So now they're actually making the building. So they can send the building to a project, everything's on the same truck and they just get out there and they have a different crew that, you know, contractors that erect it, go from there. So it's, that's pretty exciting and that's gonna bring in more sales tax. Barti is really, already a strong contributor to our sales tax, we appreciate that. And they'll create four, five more jobs, he said. So that's, we're actually building that on a lease purchase basis where it really still belongs to the Economic Development Corporation until he gets through paying on it, which helps him and us both, so. Mighty Molding, we helped them with their building, they made an addition. Mighty Molding's a really neat story for the Eastland Economic Development Corporation and the city, you know, they, they were in Coleman and back when you were early on involved, got to come to Eastland and they just blew up, you know, and they've done real well. And then we were able to help Brent, uh. Kirkland, Kirkland, thank you. Buy the thing and he's done great and he's actually taken on new lines, he's building a new warehouse and EDI was able to help him make a down payment on that building, so we're excited about that. He's creating a lot of jobs. Another thing we did fairly recently was the Terry Street purchase, you know, we bought a little piece of Terry Street over there that's working out well, so. The city guys have already approved it and it's gonna be a real nice street when it's finished. Maverick Town Homes, they're, they just keep stacking them up, it's amazing, they're over a hundred now, isn't that right, Tom?
Uh, I think we're just a little under, yeah, maybe like ninety.
I mean, he came over here, remember a few years ago and built twenty-eight, I think, just to see if it would work and now he's at a hundred and there's no signs of slowing down, it's pretty amazing. And Andy Hanson, the guy that owns that, he and his sons are actually, they have purchased all the remaining lots on Colony Street. You know, Jason Cockman was building some houses, Andy and his family have built, bought all the rest of those and there's actually four houses under construction right now on Colony Street, this is pretty exciting. And then also in the Warner subdivision, which is out behind the medical clinic, above the nursing home, the community foundation has hired Improtectivs and Todd to, they've looked at planning that and, you know, redeveloping that, kind of advising them on how to, how to proceed with that project, so, pretty exciting. We've got, you know, one of the things it seems like we've struggled with for a while is a place for people to live. You know, people want to be here, there's got to be a place to live, so we're excited about that. Uh, the dollar, what I call the dollar dollar store, the family dollar, Dollar Tree store. Lights are on down there right now, it looks like you could go in and buy something, but.
Oh, it went up fast, didn't it?
It went up real fast.
Just to jump on, to add on to that, I heard from the lady who's doing, over the interiors, they sent me an updated sheet of the layout of the inside of the building, even though it's not required for what we need from them. It looks, it looks great, I gave them the verbal okay on that, that, you know, they can go ahead and proceed to finish out, so, they're getting there.
That's gonna be neat, we're fired up. Harbor Freight, we still don't know if they're coming or not. You know, we've, we've heard they were coming into the old tractor supply building and we heard it weren't. I've talked to both parties and it seems that they're just negotiating on the rent and the space allotted and all of that sort of stuff. I, I hope they come, I think it'd be a good fit, but if they don't, something else will, so we're, we're fired up. Uh, the Stanley property is something that we've all been kind of anxious about for a long time, it's, you know, the old full and wider property down there. And I've talked to two different groups that are serious about developing that. One of them actually made Mr. Stanley an offer, as I understand, they're kind of negotiating price. Then I had another guy call today, and I mean, I'm not a realtor, I just give people these other phone numbers and get out of the way. But anyway, there's, there seems to be a lot of energy there. And, you know, the guy today got the phone number of some more folks that have little tracts of land around, so that's pretty exciting. Uh, that, that would really be wonderful, if we could get some, some nice things in there because we just don't need to have empty lots and empty buildings. Housing, I talked to the owner, broadband, JJ and I have visited with, with the folks in DeLeon that made the presentation, do you all remember that? And also Richard Barron and TXOL, you know, they're proceeding, kind of, they're on different tracks but they have the same goal in mind, is to connect everybody, so. We, you know, we're, we're not picking winners and losers, we're, we're supportive of everybody. But the, the TX, I mean, the, the folks out of DeLeon, the Telecom, they have actually had a crew here the last couple of weeks going around and doing a survey of all the poles, all the lines that were measured, poles, they've taken pictures of them. Guy called me and said, you know, we, we need to get in some property out here west of town. Anyway, we go driving them, they're real nice, I mean, I don't, they just didn't understand what they were here for. And like, once they realized they're just doing a survey, it's gonna be good for the community, all of that, everything was fine, but it was a little awkward, you know, I thought this guy was gonna get me killed out here. It was fine, turned out to have made, made a new friend, didn't even, you know, it was fine. Um, but basically, everything's going well, you know, I'm excited about the sales tax, about the business, about people wanting to come here. You know, people are looking for places to put in businesses, build homes, we really couldn't ask for more, so. That's the best part of it, that's what we.
Outstanding, even old school, it still sounds good. Thank you, Tom.
Thank y'all for your support, appreciate it.
You're a true asset and, and like you said, a lot of this stuff, you're just, you know, connecting people together and making it happen and that's great and we appreciate you for that. Okay, the seat, board of city commissioners may discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion and consideration authorized the Eastern Chamber of Commerce Riff Rivers Cut-off. April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three is an open container event, IAW ordinance twenty to seven eighty-one dated one twelve twelve in designating the event area as a premise for public consumption of alcoholic beverages by adult twenty-one age or older. During the event, provided that the event is approved by the Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission, the beverages are distributed by licensed TABC permit holder, security personnel are present and the event area is posted with the appropriate barriers and signage.
Yes, sir, this is something that we've done in the past for, I know the last couple of years that I've been here, I don't, I didn't see any changes to the overall footprint of what they're trying to do. I think the tent's gonna be in the same spot and probably the same vendors and stuff. Ms. Elrod's here to talk some more about that since she's taken over chamber duties at this time.
Kind of filling in, so, yeah, it's all gonna be the same.
Are we gonna use the concrete barriers like we started using in the past?
Yes.
Because I've heard y'all complain about it, but I still think that's.
Well, the complaint is not about, wait a minute, the complaint is not about having the barriers, it's about getting people in and out of there, the vendors, before the eight o'clock time thing that, you know, they've got to be out of there. And we'll get them come in at that morning of the event, you know, about, like, between seven and seven thirty, it's crazy in there. Or seven, and, and it's amazing because like at eight, eight o'clock, I'm thinking, oh, this is not gonna happen at eight o'clock, it's like it all out. But before that, we had like one at Ripfest last year that we were really kind of finagling, trying to figure out how he was gonna get in. He had a, a big trailer and stuff and after those barriers are set, it makes it tough to get in there. So the, the thing was kind of like, was there any way to make it where we could close that off at eight in the morning instead of, they set them up the night before and of course, those guys can come in the back way, but then once you start filling all those vendor spots up on the backside, it gets real trafficky real fast. You know, people setting their stuff up and, you know, having their vehicles all in there. So, and that's what I think, I had put on there that, you know, the chamber was even interested in if we could even pay somebody, this, a city worker to set, like, you know, I don't know, how many, how many are there, is there just two? Or is there, there's at least four?
There's four per, I think we have twelve total, we have sixteen total and we put four.
Are they on the back areas too then?
There's, on a couple, like last year, is it?
Oh, so they choked it up even more.
Well, I mean, and we do that for the vendor's protection on Friday night also.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you don't want crazy people driving through there, I, I get it, so. Anyway, but that's just, we're trying to find a happy medium between not upsetting the, the vendors that are trying to get in there and they're going like, how, how do I do this? And then the, the safety of everybody, you know, we want everybody to be safe, so. But that is of course top priority and we will figure it out, we have in the past, so we will figure it out. Whatever happens, we'll be good with, but if anybody comes up with a good plan and if we even need to kick in some money to make that plan better, then we're willing to do that, to a point, to a point. I'm sure there's a budget top somewhere, I hadn't heard what it is, so you might, go ahead and put it in there and I'll.
Hey, Forrest, do you have a question or comment?
Uh, yes, sir, if there was a way to coordinate, because we always keep one open, opening open and block it with fire trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to have access in and out.
Right, and that was, another thing we thought about was, you know, like, of course you want it where y'all can, emergency vehicles can get in there, so I figured you had something like that and, is, where, where do y'all stage that at?
Typically, we've been on West Commerce at Mulberry.
Okay, so you're back.
Those are not permanently barricaded with the large concrete barriers, they're barricaded with fire apparatus. So if there was some way to coordinate that, we would be happy to accommodate however we can to allow it for the traffic at needed times.
Well, see, it'll be blocked by, of course, and the tent, did they get on there? Because we'll need the tent set up too, the city, because they're gonna have, at the same time, the wine festival, we'll go on in that tent and that's what the alcohol thing is, is about. And that's gonna be blocked and then, um, of course, that one, Commerce, Pass Lamar on the, on that side of Lamar. So that'll be blocked, that area. And then the next one is, what you're talking about, is that where y'all stood up then, the fire truck is back?
No, typically, we've been on West Commerce at Mulberry.
At Mulberry.
That's the only access we gave them last time.
Yeah.
Mulberry is the next street after.
Well, did we have a tent? Though, you know, see, that's, we got the tent in the Ripfest.
But we did, we did put, but we did put some concrete barriers behind there.
Yeah, and that would.
But because there was, because there was an incident.
Okay, well, we just had three conversations, let him finish.
If, you know, if the plan needs to be modified for the upcoming to, uh, put the permanent barriers on the west side and do the temporary, the fire trucks somewhere else where it, it assisted with the ebb and flow of the vendors coming in and out, we would be happy to help the city or.
Yeah, a permanent one behind the tent would be fine because nobody's gonna be able to drive through there anyway, so.
However, y'all, we'd be happy to be a part of that.
You got the logistics of all that?
Yes, sir.
We'll work it out.
And we put, we put, do put up those concrete barricades behind the tent.
Right.
Because of an issue that took place a few years ago.
Right, and that's fine, because you can't drive through there anyway, so lock it off.
Somebody tried to drive through there.
You have any questions?
My only issue would be that, I don't, I, I mean, it's great to use the fire trucks, but if, if, if we have a major event and the fire trucks have. but if, if, if we have a major event and the fire trucks have to leave, I have to have something across there. I can't have, I mean, if we have one incident with one person when we're there, it's gonna ruin this event completely.
I'll put a, I'll put my van there with that.
And especially if we're gonna have alcohol at this event. I, I would prefer to have it where there's no way a vehicle can get into where those civilians are at. So, I would prefer to have the cement blocks up where the, where the most people are gonna be.
And that's what we've been trying to do.
And that, that's where I would prefer to have the cement blocks up, and then have the fire trucks on the backside, because in the event they have to leave, I can put marked units there, I can do something else. But blocking with marked units is not the same as a eighty thousand pound fire truck. So.
Okay. Y'all have got all that covered. We're good?
Good.
Okay.
I was gonna say, we'll figure it out, whatever. Good with it.
Any questions from the commission?
I may quit by then.
Well, now we have to, now we have to consider the variance on the alcohol.
Yes, sir.
And of course, it's gonna be within three hundred feet of First Christian Church and within three hundred feet of the Methodist Church. So, we just, we're gonna have to just take that into consideration when we issue a variance on.
The answer to that was the doorway to doorway.
That's already been addressed.
Yeah. And, and.
Last year, last year, Terry and I went out there, because with the, the rules for that, it's not, it's not probably line, probably line, it's front door to front door along the right ways. So, it's with the way we had them place it for Ripfest.
And Ripf Ribs last year.
Yeah, Ripf Ribs last year.
The word, the address says that we're designated to the event area.
I see, yeah. I see what he's saying. Well, I, I was under the understanding of it was just the, the tent we laid out last time. But if they are doing the entire area, some of that might be too close to the First Christian Church as far as.
And really, I don't have a problem with that on Saturday, as long as it's all cleaned up.
Right, right, right.
But I just, I just know the commission needs to be aware of what we're issuing the variance on. Now, I would, if it's in order, I'd go and make a motion that we do issue a variance for this event.
Okay, and we'll be clean. We went through that last year. It's all cleaned up and taken care of.
Second.
Got a motion from Susan. A second for being any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll pose the same sign. Motion carries. All right. Number two, discuss consideration authorized the Eastern Chamber of Commerce to host a carnival before and during the East, the Old Rip Festival, October fifth through October seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, sir. Last year, we, y'all approved for them to do this. It never really took place, but I think they're trying to get an earlier start on this from, they could, they had trouble getting a carnival to commit and come to town. They would have to get permission from, like they said, the First Baptist Church, because Tony and I did look at some rules today, and they're, they're, with a thousand feet from residences, five hundred feet from the businesses.
But then again, those rules were written over a hundred years ago. It was, those were adopted in July fifth of nineteen twenty-one. And what I really like is that it talks about animal show, tent show, and, but it does say that a motion picture show is different.
I remember that, like, it was yesterday.
But I, I think that with part of this, you know, if you give JJ the ability to approve it, you know, being with, you know, making variance for those rules, because they are so antiquated is the best. Those are the city rules. That's what the city adopted in nineteen twenty-one. It, it does need to be updated, and I think that's something Terry and I can look at and see what other councils do for that. I know that there are still rules about it, but it's much more forgiving than this.
Okay. Unless, as long as we don't run into a problem, then we're gonna try. I mean, you know, if a problem arises, then next year, we might need to look at it from a different angle.
True. I think it's, it's, it's always a good idea to give something a try, and then you can find out what the problem's gonna be. I know that Ripf Ribs and Rip Festival's, you know, changed over the years on how it's handled, just because of, you know, different issues or different items popped up. And I, and I will say, in the chamber's memo here, you know, they understand that it will be taken down on Saturday night and cleaned up by Sunday morning for, you know, First Christian Church is there, First Baptist Church is right there, and that will affect their parking for.
Well, a lot of those are in the First Baptist Church parking lot or the EMH field.
Yes.
The old funeral home.
Yeah, the funeral home.
Oh, oh, okay. Got you.
What, what does this do to Brian Jackson's auto show and stuff?
It's, i- i- it's the same thing, because whenever he did his, he filled out a special event permit, like we're gonna have to do for this.
Well, it is this, it is in the same parking lot?
No.
No.
It's moved.
It moved?
Yeah, it kind of, it kind of morphed.
From the Olive, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. It was, yeah, it's over, well, let's see, because they've had it a couple of different places. But I think last year, wasn't it more in front of the First Christian Church and, or the Parsonage down that, what is that road like?
They're not calling it on the church parking lot?
Uh-uh. Well, there's a few, but, but in this, and like I say, to me, looking at it, the bigger spot would be where the funeral home was. That's a nice big area now. The parking lot's really, and really not huge, although it's got pavement, and that's kind of nice if it. And this is something, we're asking for permission, and we're always constantly trying to find this, and it's kind of hard to find something that will come, you know, it's always booked and we have problems with it. And so, it may not happen, but we'll, like, ask for permission and see if we can get it, you know, go ahead and get our permission for it. And then if we don't, instead of waiting, thought, oh, we can do this, and then, you know, so we're just trying to.
Well, we've had Brian's car show for about thirty years, and I wouldn't do anything to jeopardize.
No.
That's mine.
No.
Send them to the motion, I care.
His, his car show moved to Mulberry, almost to Mulberry and, I'm drawing, what's the road that runs in front of City Hall, right? On Commerce. Yeah. They put, they put the car show, uh, um, almost on that far.
Wait, did they do that the last year? First time they done that, man?
I think just, I think it's the first time.
It went way down the street. They're locally cool. They had all these signs set up.
I would suggest that the chamber coordinate with Brian Jackson to make sure that there's no conflict.
Well, Brian is really not the one, he's went in, he's got his name with it, but it's the, what is that? I'm trying to think of that there.
The, the, the.
The camp, the.
Solid Rock.
Solid Rock. It's, it's those guys that are actually running in and taking the, you know, they're gathering money for it and everything. So, and that's when it all kind of changed, I think, is when they took.
I love that we're. But then we coordinate with Sam Harris then.
Because he's the First Christian Church. Okay. This is where we're talking about. So, I don't know. You know, like I say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna mess up Brian's thing. That's whoever's good.
I'm good with this, if we don't mess up. And we, and we coordinate and make sure we're on the same page.
Right, right.
Like, we've been doing Brian for thirty years. Car show's been thirty years longer. Well, like I said, it's a priority, but he's there first, and we can't.
Yeah. Well, no, I guess. It's like, I wouldn't do anything to, you know, if it was between that and this, then.
And, and being on the Edwards, or the EMH now, EMH property, that is, they didn't use that property, the church parking lot. They definitely used the church parking lot. And now, maybe not just last year, but they may be thinking about changing back to do something different. Y'all said they're trying to do this, or we need to make sure we're communicating with somebody to move good with that. So, that'll be on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
If we can, yeah, we can get, so that, the plan was to kind of have somebody that can do it multiple nights and then be done with it Saturday. Of course, we just, Saturday's all we care about, really. You know, but, you know, we'd have that, so that a lot of these places set up and want to run more than one rate.
That's what we'll go through. Okay. Your turn, Mike.
Next motion, that we authorize Eastern Chamber of Commerce to host the carnival before and during the Old Rip Festival, with provisions that has not appeared with Brian's car show. Got a motion from Susan. A second for being any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll pose the same, same sign. All right. Discussion and consideration to accept a bid for Project TWBDB, the contract six-two-seven-six-nine CID-O-one submitted by Fambro Construction, and authorize the city manager to negotiate a final price with them.
Yes, sir. You remember, this is for the main pump line, to replace it through town, coming up Lago Vista, all the way back down here, past Plumber, tying back into the existing pump line. We started, y'all started this project in two thousand and eighteen, when it was cheaper to do business. Since then, we opened bids last Thursday, right, Scott?
Yes.
Proposals. Proposals, excuse me. No. And they came back, as we expected, higher than what was projected in two thousand and eighteen.
And Scott put his fee on there and doubled it, didn't he? Do what?
Two thousand and eighteen's a long time ago.
Yeah. Whole nother presidential election. Okay. Well, y'all got a copy of this thing.
Yeah. And if you'll remember, why it says negotiate final price, about a year ago, Scott came before the commission, I thought it was a good idea to change it from a hard bid, where we have to go with the bottom dollar of a bid, and you can't change anything, to a competitive sealed bid, which gives us some room to negotiate a certain amount. Now, do I expect it to be a huge amount? Probably not, but it does give us some flexibility of that. I think the best course of action for tonight is just to approve the bid that Fambro, base bid, that Fambro put in for one million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars, and give me room to negotiate with him to see if his price can come down any. So, that way, we can get a firm price and decide what our next step is going to be.
And that comes in at about one point one million above what Texas Water Development Board.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But, but a low interest loan might be available in that amount, in the one point one million?
Yes. But it, it's, it's hard to say exactly what that amount would have to be without a final price. My, my plan is to, once we get a final price, is to approach Texas Water Development Board and go, hey, nobody knew COVID was gonna happen, basically to see if they can kick in some, some extra funds to cover some of the costs in this.
I'm game for getting our new representative and senator involved, if we can, if that'll do any good, to get some pressure on the Water Development Board and get them to, because this is, there, there is no excuse for this taking four years after what they do. They're, they're just, you blame it on whatever you want to, you know, COVID was two years later type of deal, so that COVID excuse really doesn't hold water. And I just, whatever we can do, we've got a lot of work to do on this one.
A lot of work.
And this, this diagram here shows the extent of the direction of the water line. Twelve inch water line.
It's ten thousand four hundred and fifty-five feet of water line.
It's actually gonna be fourteen inch if we use positive, because it's got a bigger wall, and we have twelve inch ID, but it'll, I think that's, it ended up, and that's the other reason. The, the two things that I did to help position us to have some more options at this point, because ever since twenty eighteen, I've been updating JJ's predecessor and JJ on what it's looking like this is gonna bid. And when we put the budget together for the application in twenty eighteen, the construction was estimated at about eight hundred thousand dollars. The next year, we estimated it again, and it was right at about a million. Following year, it was about one point two. Last year, I updated it at one point four, and it bid at two. And quite honestly, it's what we're seeing across the board. Just about every project that we are dealing with that involves a funding agency, the process started in excess of two years ago, and almost all the projects are bidding for about double what they were estimated for when the budget went in. And it's, it's tragic. It's, it's, the prices are where we've never, ever seen them before or ever even imagined them to be before. But it's where they are, and I'm not sure they're ever gonna go back down. I mean, everybody I'm talking to says they're not gonna, as far as pricing goes. Water Development Board is, has issues with approving things, and you're right, Mayor, that it's, shouldn't have taken this long. And I would welcome any help you can do, but I, I will tell you that we've had other cities of your size and larger do the same thing with their political pressure, and it's, there's nothing, nothing that happens, because the reality is that they've got almost no staff down there anymore, and they do hundreds of projects around the state. And particularly for small projects, they honestly don't care. They're a bank. And they've got, say, two billion dollars worth to spread out over the state. It's easier for them to, you know, this is, this is Scott Hayes' opinion, sour everybody on all these, these little communities that are, really helps and need the money, and one million dollar project, two million dollar project, three million dollar project, all that is paperwork for them. If they could get all of them to go away, and they distributed that two billion dollars in ten projects between Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, San Antonio, Austin, that'd be great. They'd only got ten projects to deal with, instead of spreading it out where it really helps. And it's just, they, they, they're unwilling to pay, particularly engineering staff down there, what they need to handle the workload that they have, and the people that are there can't get it done. And, I mean, you pounded on them and pounded on them and pounded on them, and they're, it's like talking to the wall now. I mean, it, it's not gonna change. And it, it's, it's tragic, and it's, it's, but it's, in reality, it's the best option out there for y'all. When you compare it with going to the open market, even if you had a really good bond rating as a city and could, could, you know, issue of, of bonds on the public market, you, you're probably still saving in the neighborhood of, I'm gonna say, probably half, four hundred thousand to half million dollars over the, of the life of this project to do this, you know, with the options that they have. So, the reality is, they subsidize the loans. You're gonna get a rate that's the lowest that you can get anywhere. They offer loan forgiveness, grant money for some of it, and I think you received some of that on the initial package, but they've recognized that this is happening on a regular basis. They've established a fund of about two point, or two hundred and fifty million dollars right now to cover projects that are bidding beyond the budget because of what's going on. And they're, they have that available to offer at their, their reduced interest rate. I've taken the liberty, JJ, to already initiate with your financial advisor to start looking into what is involved in doing that, and then what the, the funding package would be as far as the terms, and then produce an amortization schedule that you guys can sit down with and compare with what you've got on the books, and make the decision, informed decision about, can we afford to do this if we fund the additional overage with a, a another loan from the Water Development Board? The other thing we did is, you know, I bid four different types of pipe with this project, thinking that, you know, there's, we, we might get good pricing there, and right now, it's just the opposite of what it usually is. PVC is higher than HDP pipe and poly pipe. Poly pipe beat the PVC on this job by over, about a half a million dollars, and I've never seen that before. The poly is usually more expensive. Scott, could you, could you explain to us the financial couch touches of not taking on this project? You, you would require some serious coordination with Water Development Board. You, you would require some serious coordination with Water Development Board, but I'm, I'm assuming it would happen the same way it would do if you were to execute a project and had money left over at the end. You have the option of taking that and paying it back on the loan. Uh, the, the way they rec, they, they require you to pay back in the opposite order of the date of the COs, so you're, you're paying it off in reverse order. So it's not as beneficial to the city as it otherwise would be. I assume that they would allow you to do that and take the remaining money and, and pay the, pay it back towards the existing loan money that you have with the state, and then finance the remain, the terms are set as far as the interest rate on the remainder, and you would pa- make that payment and still, until it was, the loan was paid off with what you didn't pay off with the construction budget, and then you'd end up having to pay on projects that you don't even have, which obviously wouldn't be a...
I'm sure the question's gonna come up to one of us. Is it really necessary? We have to replace that pipe? I think we already know the answer to that, but, but what would, what would be your take on that?
Well, the existing pipe was built in the nineteen fifties. There are places where it goes under businesses. Uh, it, it goes under Ken's shop out there. Uh, it, it's not in a, in a very convenient location. It was placed there before the town was built. There's stuff that's been built over it. It's been very difficult for the city to maintain. It's a concrete steel cylinder line, and in most cases, the city has to engage a contractor to repair it, because it's beyond the capability of what the city crews have to do. Uh, it continues to fail. Uh, in my opinion, it's reached the end of its useful life and it, and is in need of replacement. We, we've kind of streamlined the route with the new proposed line to be more of a direct shot between the pump station and the water tower. Uh, and got it away from Main Street, which, you know, it's right in the middle of all of the businesses right now. Same location, and also would be a severe inconvenience to a lot of them, and continues to be when there are repairs that need to be made. Uh, in some cases, the businesses that are located on top of it, in my opinion, it's unsafe for them to be there. If that line were to blow out, it's a relatively high pressure line. Well, not only water quality, but the, you could destroy that building if it sprung a high pressure leak right underneath it.
This is something up?
No.
So actually, we're looking at a money saving.
How, how much, how, how much does it cost us to repair this line over the last couple of years? Cause this blew out a few times.
We spent, not, not last year, but the year before, we spent roughly three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in one year, just for water power repairs.
Is, is the plan to phase out the old line? Or just, or, or to reduce the pressure on it?
So it's still viable in some aspects, but the main?
We would have less repair work?
There's still a lot of people that are tied into it, so we're gonna leave them tied into it. We don't have the expense of trying to relocate their services to another line, but we'll drop the pressure in that line dramatically from what it is right now. And it also won't feel the surges that it sees from the pump cycling right now. It'll just have a constant pressure on it from the pressure in the water tower.
What would be the expected lifespan, uh, or useful life, life of the new line?
Over a hundred years.
Over a hundred years, okay.
The poly, poly line, I, I always prefer personally to use poly, especially on a pump line like this, than PVC, because it's more flexible. Uh, usually, we don't have this opportunity of it being cheaper than PVC, cause usually PVC beats it, and we end up using PVC. PVC is more, more, uh, stiff, brittle. Uh, poly line, H P E line is rather flexible, inductile. And when a pump surge hits it, it's actually soft enough that that water hammer can actually expand it slightly, and the walls of the pipe are so flexible that it'll actually dampen out that water hammer before it actually gets to where it can, you know, accelerate or become worse than it is. And it, it's just really good pipe for a pump line, because it, it's very tough. Uh, it, it's so flexible that if you, you can take poly, and if you have to shut the water off in it, and you don't have an operational valve, you can expose the line and put, put a pinch off machine on it and actually collapse the line and shut the water off, and open the pinch off machine back up, and it has no damage to the pipe at all. It's that, it's that good a material, and that's why it's really, I, I've seen videos of it. They use it in the copper mines in the mountains, and the, the lines lay on top of the ground, and they'll freeze up in the winter time. And how they make them operational again, they run a caterpillar up on one side and run down the pipe and crush the ice and drive hot, and then the pump, pipeline's working.
It's pretty durable.
And it doesn't even, I mean, it can take that kind of, so, I mean, I think we're using the best material that's gonna give the city the best service for the longest period of time in all these future problems. Uh, I'm just disappointed that what it is, where it is, is, man, we're, we're in this situation everywhere we are right now, and it's really hard. That's one place I try not to be when we do a cost estimate, is the low bidder. Uh, I, I try very hard when I do an estimate to be what will be probably the median of all the bids you're gonna get. I don't wanna be the high bidder and give you an unreasonably high cost. I don't wanna give you a low bid that is not gonna be reasonable when bidding time comes. But, and in this case, I'm by far the low bidder, and it's just because we, nobody ever imagined what the supply chain issues that are in the system right now and the long-term effects of COVID really are, and we're still seeing them. Because there's, the other place it's coming into play is there's a lot of people, it makes, the materials we use, I think they're cutting back on their Q A, Q C and their process, because we're seeing more and more shipments that got a bad section of pipe in it, or a valve that doesn't work, or, you know, there's, so we're having to do more inspection and more looking when the project's being built. It's just a difficult time right now with pricing where it is, and I wish I had different news. I just wish I had different news for you.
Uh, no, that's, you answered my question that needed to be answered. This says that, uh, that we authorize the city manager to negotiate a final price with that. Does that negotiation obligate us to, uh, to that price prior to it being?
Problem for the city commission? Yes, y'all will have to approve the final price. Once that's determined, then we, that what we committed is when we issue him a notice of award.
Yeah.
Okay.
That we're, okay, we're awarding you the contract for this amount.
Good.
And we, we would do that subsequent to the negotiation.
This verbiage is in there to let them know that the city commission is asking for help. It's not just him going, as the city manager goes on, trying to do whatever.
Right.
We're all concerned about this, and I thought it was good to have that type of verbiage to hopefully give him, he can go in and say, hey, my city commission's hurting. We, we've got problems, we've got concerns, we've got whatever, and he can, hopefully, that'll help a little bit to, at least they'll negotiate whether they do anything or not, but he knows it's not just, they'll know it's not just coming from him, it's coming from all of us.
Well, I like it also that Fambro has given us a substantial completion in nine months, and, uh, completed in ten months, so that's, that's pretty, pretty quick.
Yeah.
I'd, uh, as an order, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept the bid for the Texas Water Development Project submitted by Fambro Construction and authorize the city manager to negotiate the final price.
I would recommend a couple of changes to that, Cecil. Don't call it a bid, and you're not accepting the bid and doing this. That's a proposal, and you're authorizing the city manager to negotiate it with price.
I would like to revise my motion. I move that we consider a proposal by Fambro Construction on the Texas Water Development Board project, and authorize our city manager to negotiate the final price.
Second.
Got a motion, I'll cease and the second I be on. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to post, same sign, motion carried. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Number four, discuss consideration of resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one, ordering a May general election.
Yes, sir, this is just a normal, we have a, an election coming up in May. We have three spots on our commission, and this is, we're just calling to order, correct Roma? So, pick up packets now through February seventeenth, and the election day is May second? May sixth. May sixth, and if we get to a point where we have three candidates, we can cancel the election at a later date.
This is three city commissioners, right? Yes, Ben and Zach, I mean.
Says two.
Yeah, it says two on here.
Yes.
My bad, I'll fix that.
So this is resolution twenty, twenty-three oh one, a resolution of the City of Eastern Texas Oregon election to be held on May sixth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Hello? For the purpose of electing three city commissioners by qualified voters of the City of Eastern, authorizing a joint election with the Eastern Independent School District, the Eastern Memorial Hospital, and the Eastern County Water Supply District, designate any polling places, and directly notification of such election. Take a motion.
So moved.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one.
I still second.
Second from Cecil. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign, motion carried. Number five, discuss consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two. The resolution authorizing a continued participation with the steering committee of the city served by Encore, and authorizing a payment of ten cents per capita to the steering committee to fund regulatory and legal proceedings and activities related to the Encore Electric Delivery Company.
Yes, sir, this is one of those wonderful steering committees that we get to, if y'all choose to be a part of, uh, that will try to negotiate our rates for the upcoming year. We do them every year. Again, I'll say, we're too small a city to kind of step out there on our own and try to represent ourselves when it comes to a company like that. It's better to be part of a large group and try to get a set rate.
Take a motion.
We approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two to authorize the continued participation in steering committee of the city served by Encore.
Motion, being the second from Cecil, for approved Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to post, same sign, motion carried. City manager briefing.
Okay, uh, the archaeological dig is done, stamped, sent off for their deal. Um, the major findings that were kind of holding some stuff up, and there was some debate about, was some steel cables and some pieces of glass. Um, I have the ninety-five page report on my desk. If you would like a copy to read it, I will be more than happy to make a copy for you. Um, with that major hurdle being, aside from the environmental, we should start moving forward pretty quickly. Uh, I did, um, receive some letters to sign that we're going to, it's the occupants of some homes in town, that, basically telling them that they're in the process of, uh, the houses being sold, uh, for this project, so that was a good sign. The F I F H and H study in the dam repairs kind of run simultaneously, uh, for this last month. Uh, last week, H D R, uh, and some, uh, gentleman from E H T were here looking at the dams, um, seeing what need to be done, and, uh, part of that H and H is, you know, they're gonna have recommendations for us on what to do, and part of the G L O project will have, has always had some spillway restoration component of it, I guess we could say. All that went really well, and there were a total of seven of us, eight of us, including myself, and they got to lay eyes on it. They brought their structural people out to really get a good sense of what was going on. Anything you wanna add to that part, Scott?
No, uh, other than, from my perspective, it's been a, an effort of trying to throttle them back on the scope of the dam project, just because the scope that was put in in the original G L O grant was basically, the direction that I was given was to fix the, as many of the water development, or the T C Q's, right, dam safety write-ups as that we could for both of those facilities, and i- if you take that to the nth degree, you'd basically have to rebuild both of the dams, because neither one are compliant. So, to keep the G L O project intact, we are doing the, the maximum amount that we can on the dams, uh, to make sure that the city is safe. And asking the rest of that to be put in a report that H D R will give to the city that will give you the ability to address those in the future, should funds become available to do that, and still not completely hijack the G L O project with, for the other, uh, intended items that are in there. And, and the city, the mayor and the city have been very clear on prioritization of those from the get-go. Uh, basically, four different steps to that project. Initial one being the buyout of homes that we could in the flood plain, and then second of all, clearing the creek channels of the north and fork, south forks of Leon and Weaver Creek. Uh, the third being, uh, drainage improvements in town, which included, uh, the, both of the dams, repairs that were necessary, and reconstruction of the culvert under East Main Street there, uh, by the shopping center. And then the final phase being reconstruction of the flood prone, prone streets in town uh, out of concrete pavement, rather than either gravel surface or asphalt surface that some of them are right now, so that they're capable of withstanding floodwaters in the future, because some of them are actually conduits to get the drainage from certain parts of town to the lower, uh, drainage ways. So, our intention is to make them capable of doing that and still be long, you know, have longevity for the city from a, a driving surface. So, we wanna keep that, those, those priorities intact, but the way this is drug on, the initial, with all the environmental issues we've had, and how the acquisition part of this is drug out, in some cases, we've almost wasted a year and a half, it seems, and we're not, haven't done anything yet. We still got a deadline, and we gotta have all of this done by. The way I was originally trying to schedule the project to occur was to, given the fact that pricing, construction pricing is going nuts right now, I wanted to take the highest priority, priority projects and bid them first, and not bid a subsequent project until we had hard bid numbers on the first one, so that we could adjust the budget as necessary, with the final street project being the variable, if you will, that we've, if we've got to cut back on the streets to do those higher priority projects, we will. But now it's getting to the point where we, we're almost gonna have to do them simultaneously, but I still, and they were always planned to be done, the construction somewhat simultaneously, but we were trying to stage them to give us flexibility to know what the budget was along the way But we were trying to stage them to give us flexibility to know what the budget was along the way as we bid each step, so that we don't overextend ourselves, uh, and we can keep the priorities intact. And, and that's been the struggle right now, and that's, I know it's been frustrating for the city, it's been frustrating for me. I mean, it's, it's just been one thing after another.
The bureaucracy.
That AJ is talking about. At one point, they were going to make us get permission from every landowner along the north and south forks of Leon and Weaver Creek, which was estimated to be in the neighborhood of 40 different entities, some of which were family trusts of people that don't even live here. And I told them, we're never going to be able to accomplish that. And they finally backed off and, and settled on just an archaeological dig at the Eastland, Lake Eastland Dam and the Ringling Lake Dam, and called it good, and gave us a 95-page report over that. And it's been very frustrating.
Charged us $50,000 or something to do it, when they charged us? I can't remember, but.
The bureaucracy moves at a snail's pace, and that's been very frustrating. But right now, I'm, I'm kind of pushing and pushing because we got to get something going because we aren't going to get it done by the deadline if we don't start bidding projects. And then my first project total to bid is the, is the channel, you know, the creek channel improvements project.
Uh, Highway 6 is finally done. And we're hooked up, some people going, a two-month project took 12 months, but it's over and done with, so I think we're, I'm good.
Any other questions for JJ?
About the street lights all this morning?
I got to go over here in a second. If y'all were driven by today, Willis Select was out there first thing this morning, um, starting to work on their, they've been set back due to waiting on material. They finally got what they needed to start the project, and so they're starting. Uh, what I saw this morning is they were at the one that's knocked over, get that one up, and then they're going to work back. And, um, what we, you know, we all agreed to do was go ahead and bring everything up to LED and make all of them working all the way down.
They're here.
They were here this morning?
Yeah, they were here this morning working.
I saw them across the street from where I was.
Wow.
I wonder what the timeline was on it.
He said, once he got here, it shouldn't take him too long.
I'm anxious to go home just to see.
Yeah.
Code compliance.
Commissioner, started December with 34 cases, Terry attended cases, closed seven cases. Left us with a total of 37 cases. Total violations opened with 13, total violations closed with five. Had one property that the city had to abate, it was, it was a mowing issue. Terry's going to be putting a lien on that property, the value's $500,000 is the cost of the lien. It's what it costs to get the guy out there to mow. That's pretty much it for code compliance. As you can see from your handout, for the year of 2022, had a total of 172 permits pulled with the city. You can see the breakdown of the mayor. Biggest one is plumbing, which is something that we added a couple of years ago with plumbing permits. We had a total of 70 plumbing permits pulled through the city this last year. The one demolition was pulled in December, that's for a, uh, a little building that's over there across, or catty corner from Dollar Street, our general. I think it used to be a machine shop, it's that little building, it's got the awning over it. You know what I'm talking about? Yeah, but there's, yeah, I think it was maintenance things throughout the years, but gentlemen's, uh, got plans of opening a, uh, building, new building there, new business there. So that's exciting to see. And then like, um, Tom said, uh, with all the new businesses, um, last month, the fire chief and I, um, went down to the, uh, Old Jay's, which is now the Eastland Truck Stop, and, uh, he completed the CO inspection for him, and I completed the, uh, plumbing final. And so we gave them their CO, they were able to have merchandise start being brought into that store. So they're stocking the store now, they're getting to a point, they're cleaning up all the stuff that's still out there on the pad. Um, I think the sign, they've already pulled the parteras, waiting for it to get completed. There's a electronic portion of it that's going up, but they're going to be ready to open pretty soon. Uh, that's another thing I, I didn't think of, to quantify this until just now, but, um, the last year, you know, we've, we've added doing COs for new businesses here in town. Anytime there's a new business open, uh, property change ownership, business change ownership, we have CO now, so they're tied in with the water department. And I know that within the last couple of months, we've gotten, what, six or seven applications. Chief's been able to make contact with people as they're getting ready to open their businesses and, uh, setting up inspections for them going through, making sure they meet the fire code with what we have adopted, what we're looking for. Not trying to do anything that, you know, causes a problem with a business, especially one that's been here, but just making sure the minimums are, are met to where, you know, they're safe to get in and out of. And, um, I know he's probably going to talk about that a little bit more, but we've got, uh, two that came in today also. So bank through the last year, we probably had, with JJ doing some before, uh, chief got into them, I think we've done probably 14 or 15 COs up to now, which is good to know because that means there are things that are updating here in town.
We have any kind of an issue with yard sale signs and that kind of stuff. We've, I've been going over in my neighborhood, and I don't see them very often, but I'm just curious.
No, the, it's one thing that I've always liked about here in Eastland, and I wish other cities would do this, that we have the two boards that are dedicated just for that. So it's, it is a central location for people wanting to find yard sales to have them on there. Terry normally doesn't have a big problem with yard sale signs. Sometimes he'll find signs that, you know, businesses have come in, and it's the, you know, we biologically houses, you know, we got a lot somewhere for sale, and stuff like that, it's out to town, businesses are normally a problem. Uh, most people ta-take advantage of the yard sale locations by bribes and then overwhelmingly set up here.
Do you want to ask for Tommy? Thanks, Tommy. Please, chief, please.
All right. So we had, for December, we had 226 calls for service. Uh, we had 34 incidents or offenses that were committed. Uh, we had 229 business checks in December, 26 arrests were made, with 12 cases being filed at district attorney's office, so the others were misdemeanors or filed in city court. 70 citations were issued for traffic violations and 265 warnings for 335 contacts total. We're still averaging three to one, so three warnings to one citation. Our animal control officer issued six citations with nine warnings, and she had 82 calls for service, so she's still working really, really hard. So we're real proud of her. In December, or start of January, when I took over, I did a few promotions. We promoted Don Walls from patrolman to the corporal. We promoted Sam Joyner from corporal to patrol sergeant, and Scott McDay from sergeant investigator to lieutenant investigator. All that was done within our budget without having to do anything. And of course, Dan promoted the captain when I was made chief. So that put our chain of command back where it should be and in line, and has made things work a lot better. I got my yearly K-9 report in with Kate and Buck, we're real proud of those two, she's been working real hard. We had 84 vehicle searches, 13 large narcotics cases were made, with 29 fentanyl bills taken off the streets of Eastland. Uh, fentanyl's a real big thing and real dangerous right now, so we're glad to get that off. We also had 180 pounds of methamphetamines with a street value of 4.4 million dollars taken off. A lot of that was off of one big bust, but that's several other small ones that ran into that also. Multiple guns and gang members have been taken off by that unit, so our K-9 unit is, is really done a great job for us. Uh, I have also acquired a retired Texas Ranger, Shane Morrow, who's now a reserve investigator for us, so he'll be helping out Scott on major crimes, uh, put him on his reserves. So I think that's going to really beef up our investigative division, especially when it comes to child crimes and things like that. We're getting new uniforms, uh, within our budget, that it's just something I think every chief comes in, wants to put his own stamp on things, and I wanted more of a uniform to look for my guys, so they're going to be back, it's going to have a stripe on the pant, really nice uniforms. Also, we, we acquired stop sticks, which, I don't know if y'all know what stop sticks are, but they're like, I know Chief does, but they're like spike systems, we've had them in the DPS for 30 years. It's a, it's a way to bring vehicles to a stop during a pursuit safely. It, it deflates the tires slowly, instead of having to shoot vehicles off the road or ram them off the road anymore, it's a whole lot safer, a lot less lawsuits involved with them. So we require those, and DPS is going to come in and teach that for us free of charge. So proud of that. Awards, we, we've had this last year, Officer of the Year with Sam Joyner, he's done a fantastic job. I'm probably going to lose Sam, I was talking to chief about that earlier, DPS is just knocking at the door trying to get him. And I don't blame him, uh, he's an outstanding officer, he's going to be hard to replace, but we're going to utilize him as long as we can. Also, today, I was invited to a luncheon at the crisis center, and unbeknownst to me, but Scott got MDT Officer of the Year award today. So he is, he got their, basically their Officer of the Year, and that's countywide, that's every agency in the county, for the work he's done with the crisis center over the last year, working with children and, um, adult victims on that. So we're really excited about the new year, uh, police department's moving along, everything's going great, so. Y'all have any questions for me?
What to do, uniform going to look like, I still recognize, it's going to be tanned, what are you going to do?
They are, they are a dark gray shirt with a black pant with a gray stripe down it, and then of course they'll have all the, back to the metal badges and the metal nameplates and the tie, and they're going to look sharp.
They're going to have on ties?
A lot of times it will.
You're going to stay like that?
Yes, sir. Tells me otherwise. I have a uniform on my way to special occasions, but mostly I'll be like this. And then I've had Scott's pretty much dressed like this, now he's, he's going to stay in plain clothes.
Okay. Getting Shane Morrow on board is a good.
I think that's a, a very big addition for us. Shane is, uh, doing a lot of work still with the Rangers.
Will be on call type of deal, is that what that?
No, well, basically, when we, I'm not going to, anytime we have a major case, I'm going to be able to call Shane, bring him in, and he'll be able to walk hand in hand with Scott. Uh, you know, we get murder investigations, of course, the acting ranger will be involved in it also. But you bring Shane in, he brings 30 years of experience. And then he had a lot of experience in the, the child victim stuff like that, so he can do interviews, things like that, so.
Good.
Brings a lot to the table for us.
That's good, that's a good deal. Do we know the acting ranger?
Yes, sir, uh, right now, it's, I can't remember his name, but he's a kid that's coming in, he was CID for years, or say for years, for a couple of years, and then made ranger out of Wichita Falls. Bo Brown was the ranger here, he's made the ranger. Bo's going to come in and do a lot of teaching for Scott Timmy also, he's also going to teach Scott, uh, crime scene, uh, photographing and things like that. And then Shane, uh, Jason Shay out of Brownwood is, uh, put on a fugitive type squad now, but we'll also hit him. So honestly, we went from having one ranger in Eastland to almost having four. So it's really pretty nice.
And over the time, they want to get rid of that?
Yeah.
That's good.
Absolutely.
Anything else for the chief? Steve Wilson?
Thank you. Well, reviewed December 2022, real quick, uh, with 78 calls for service. That put us back up in our norm. I think there's a chance in, uh, November, we might have missed a run or two, something happened, we did down there. But we got back up to 78 calls, that put it back at our normal two and a half calls a day. 51 occurred inside the city limits, and 25 were outside in the county. We made two, and then two, uh, were made, uh, helping our neighbors. We installed one smoke detector, and we attended 14 events after 10 o'clock at night before 7:00 in the morning. Uh, we, uh, were at four structure fires this month, with two grass fires and one vehicle fire. 44 assists with the medics, uh, and four motor vehicle accidents. 14 public consists and seven false alarms are investigated type, and we did perform one vehicle extrication and one hazardous material event. So it, uh, that's our December statistics, and I apologize, just didn't make the packet, but, uh, this is our 2022 year-end summary. That, uh, these are, uh, for the total of 2022, we ended up with 841 runs, and that's a, a pretty, a little bit of increase off of our last year run volume. Uh, the, uh, March Eastland County complex, uh, helped with, with the increase in that run volume. Uh, this, uh, chart you're looking at, it shows 820 runs, uh, but there's some, uh, non-emergent events that weren't queried in that, and that's where you're seeing the differentiation in the, that call volume. But that pie chart, uh, will give you a kind of, uh, uh, an outlook of our percentages of what, what we're, uh, how we're serving the public. Some of the events that we've got going, uh, the total overall year volume for structure fires that we attended was 35, and that puts it 2.91, nearly, well, nearly three structure fires a month, uh, which is, um, very active, I believe, for our demographics. And on January 11th, to tie in with the police department's investigation stuff, uh, I acquired a master fire investigator certificate. So now the fire department, we are able to work in conjunction with the police department. Police department will do the criminal side, the arson and criminal side, and now the fire department has a cause and origin investigator. So we'll be able to work together for cause and origin with the police department pursuing the criminal investigation. So we're excited, and I'm excited about that, but that's a, going to be a nice component, I believe, to the city. Also, uh, our chili cook-off, fire department annual chili cook-off is scheduled for February 18th. We're hoping that's a, a good community event, uh, and, and a, and a successful event with a nice time. And I may have to go here. And I apologize for not having a fire marshal report, I, I failed to. But in the, in February, I will start adding that and showing the activity for our CEO.
That's something that neither one of us had thought about at the time, it's so new for us to do, we just got into doing it, so.
Yeah, so, and, and that, that report will be brief, but it will show the activity of the, uh, fire marshal, the fire inspections, the city inspection.
Who's the fire marshal?
I am, sir.
That's been a official yet, that's maybe true.
Yeah, that was, I believe, in October, uh, acquired a master certification in fire inspector and plans exam.
The medical assist jumped up from 25 to 44, is that holiday, a lot of people in town, what was?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the contributing factor was to that.
There were 43 others.
Yeah, there were all of them. But, uh, that is, there was a spike in that.